We're going to begin the meeting. Mrs. Nash, will you please do the roll call?
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Leary? Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Ms. Boebright?
Here.
Smolin?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Okay, would everyone please rise for a pledge to the flag? Pledge allegiance. Mrs. Bowlin, will you lead us, please?
Everybody's standing first. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununder God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. This evening is an organizational meeting of the Newport School Committee. By policy each year, the members of the board are to elect a chair and a vice chair. So at this time, I'm going to start the process. Good evening. Are there any nominations for chair for the Newport School Committee?
I nominate Ray Gomes for chairman.
Mr. Leary, Ray Gomes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Boebright. Are there any other nominations for chair for the Newport School Committee? Are there any other nominations for the Newport School Committee? Last call. Any other nominations for the Newport School Committee? All those in favor of the nominations will close. All those in favor of Mr. Raymond Gomes for chair of the Newport School Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Gomes. You are now chair of the Newport School Committee.
Thank you very much. To continue along, we would now need a nomination for election of vice chair for the Newport School Committee.
I nominate Ida Neary.
Nomination for Ida Neary is second by Ms. Boebright. Is there any other nominations for vice chair of the Newport School Committee? Any other nominations for vice chair of the Newport School Committee? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. And all those in favor of the election of Ida Neary as vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ms. Neary has it. I can just say thank you on behalf of both of us. Ida has at Thompson tonight for the family concert with her family for the, I believe it's a holiday concert tonight there. So she's there with her family tonight, couldn't be here. We're both very honored to continue in our roles and represent the Newport School Committee. And we give a brief little look ahead for the year. Obviously, there's many issues that face our school, but the largest is obviously, and will be discussed tonight, is the adequate space for our schools and what do we do about our high schools. So really, the next year will be a big one for Newport Public Schools and where we go in the future. So I look forward to that, and I thank everybody for their support. Next order of business would be a moment of silence. Will please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. William Mackin, retired NAC Tech culinary teacher. Elizabeth Keating, aunt of Lynn Torre, Rogers High School teacher. Peter Fitzpatrick, father of Sarah Bagley, Ari Jess teacher. Ken Walsh, uncle of Mary Ann Menes, Pell teacher. Deborah Ruggieri Crudo, mother-in-law of Colleen Crudo, Pell teacher. Janet Masturbatistas, aunt of Joanne Gorman, Rogers High School guidance clerk, and Dr. Vincent Trainor, former superintendent of Newport Schools. I will now have a moment of silence. Next order of business will be the update on the student council update. And we have Maggie Cohen here again with us this evening. So Maggie, it's all yours.
Hi, I'm Maggie. I'm the current vice president of the student council. I will be becoming the president returning in January. We had a toy drive happen last Saturday that got everyone in the festive mood. It went very well. To talk a little bit on theater, the winter play will be premiering at the end of January. And the musical auditions are actually tomorrow. So the first one is after school tomorrow, and the second one is Thursday at 5:00. We also have winter sports kicking off. RMR just played Portsmouth in their Injury Fund. And swim and boys' track team are always promising teams coming up. Science Fair is in two weeks for everyone in AP Sciences and honor sciences, I believe. And I did want to mention that the juniors are slightly disappointed about the absence of National History Day this year. We understand the funding issue, but we are a little disappointed on it. And if anyone has questions about that, Mrs. Turner is the one to ask. I don't know much on the topic, but I just know that it's not happening. That's all.
Any questions for Maggie? All right, thank you, Maggie.
Can I ask?
Oh, yeah, sure.
What's the play? Have they figured it out?
Yes. The play will be The Complete Works of William Shakespeare, Revised and Abridged. And then the musical will be Little Shop of Horrors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Maggie. Thanks for coming. Next up will be, there are no resolutions or certificates this evening. Next is presentations. The first presentation this evening is the Thompson Middle School School Improvement Team presentation and schedule update. And seeing Mrs. Sullivan coming this way, so I think she will be starting that.
And before, Chair, Mr. Gomes, there's a yellow Volkswagen license plate WR651. Your interior light is on. Yellow Volkswagen, license plate WR651. Okay, Maggie, did she leave? Okay, great. Thank you.
Hopefully, there's a little charge in the battery still.
She comes back.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I have a couple of updates for you. The first one is on the progress of the Thompson Middle School School Improvement Team. It has been probably five or six years since Thompson has had a school improvement team. So getting it up and going again is an important goal for Mr. Vakarot and I. We have a team of 17 people. I believe that list has already been shared with you. And we have our dates for the year already. We had our first meeting at the end of October. And it was a well-attended meeting. We had only one member who was unable to attend. We started the meeting by taking a look at norms, which again was something that even when we had the school improvement team some years ago, reviewing norms was a great way for us to start that meeting, and people really enjoyed that. And I asked everyone to take a look at the norms that I had presented and think about the one that meant the most to them. And we had a great initial discussion about that, to just kind of set the stage for the work that has to happen in that school improvement team. We did introductions, so to make sure everyone knew everyone, from the teachers to the parents to the community members who had joined us. Mrs. Muntner was supposed to be here with us tonight. I know she has not shown up yet. She was here last night, so maybe she got her nights kind of crossed. She was going to be here doing this presentation with me. She is not only a member of our sit team, but she is also our PTO president now. So after our discussions about norms, we also had a brief discussion about where the sit team had been in the past, why it had not been as effective as perhaps we would have liked it to have been in the last few years, and then where we saw it heading and how we could all be an important part of making it move forward, especially with the new guidance that's coming out from the General Assembly around school-based management and the role of the school improvement team in that process. Everyone then began to kind of brainstorm what they thought our goals should be for the year. And it was a very, very interesting discussion because it became almost a chicken and the egg discussion. People would say, well, I think we need to focus on scheduling. And then it would be, well, is that really scheduling or is it budget? You know, we need to talk about communication. Well, is that really communication or is that parent involvement? So it was a very, very healthy discussion. We ended up with about 10 areas that they wanted to consider, and we winnowed that down to three. The three that they have decided to focus in on are strategies for raising test scores, which is very timely considering our discussion last night, climate and culture, and scheduling. Some of the other issues that were put on the table, such as the possibility of discussing things like our grade-five report card or increasing parent involvement, many of those are being hit in other ways. So we have not completely left them behind. We see ways in which they will be addressed in the process of the year. So at this point, our next step is those areas are going to be kind of teamwork areas for my faculty at upcoming faculty meetings, getting them input. Some of that has already started. Last week, we had a faculty meeting discussing ways in which we could improve test scores. We did a couple of different exercises that ended up with a gallery walk. A gallery walk is when teachers have listed a whole bunch of ideas. All the ideas go up on the wall, and then teachers go around and they sticky-note the ideas that they like, the ideas that they want to share, the ideas that they believe show promise. So that is something we have already done. In the way of climate and culture, for those of you who were here last night, I referenced our CLE grant. You people already have a copy of the PowerPoint that I shared with the faculty. That is a work in progress. We will be adding continually to that document as we do our CLE work. That document will also be shared at our upcoming PTO meeting, which is going to be in January. So finding ways to make sure that the PTO, the sit team, the faculty exists more as a triangle as opposed to four, three or four separate areas, I think that's one way that we're really going to drive the work of the school improvement team forward to make changes in the building. One of the last thoughts that we left with at the end of that initial meeting was, no matter what we do, the most important thing is always to remember that we need to put our kids first. And that's the driver in all of our decision-making. Our next meeting is going to be in January, and then we have a meeting every other month after that.
Any questions for Mrs. Sullivan? All righty. Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next presentation will be following that will be a Rogers High School School Improvement Team presentation with Mr. Vance, I believe.
So we have a little more guidance when we started our school improvement team work from the beginning of the year. At the end of last year, we finished up our collaborative conference with NEASK, which works on our accreditation. And what that report showed is four areas that we really needed to work on. So we've had two meetings so far with our school improvement team, and it is, it's members of the teaching staff, it's administration, we have a couple of parents. And like I said, we've met twice already. And what we've been trying to do is look at the strategic plan and pair that with our NEASK recommendations. The areas in our NEASK report that we really need to work on were things such as having a school improvement team or an improvement plan. So having this in place aligns already with the NEASK feedback, as well as having, making some effort around our written curriculum. This is work that has already started with Ms. Bean. And in our CPT and department chair meetings, we're looking at our curriculum and how that maps out and how our assessments align and things along those lines. The third area is around an RTI or an MTSS model. We started a little bit of that work last year, so as we move forward, we need to kind of make that a much more robust system that works.
What's an RTI?
Response to intervention. So it's for kiddos that are not necessarily qualified for special ed, but that are struggling in their core academic areas, and how staff will identify kids that are struggling. And then you start with basic tier-one interventions, which happen in a classroom, and then you slowly dial that up to where they potentially could get referred for special ed. And right now, at Rogers, we have that kind of superficially and not to the place that we really need. So that's something that we need to address. And then the fourth area from the NEASK recommendations was looking at our habits of work and learning, which are things about like responsibility, kindness, things along those lines that are more student-based skills, not necessarily academically-based skills, but what are the characteristics we want our kiddos to represent when they walk out of Rogers. And so we're looking at trying to figure out how to make sure that those are happening in classrooms and that we can document that those things are happening as well. So we took those four goals, along with the strategic plan, and look at that graduation rate and climate and culture and things along those lines. And so we're going to blend those two together to come up with our goals for the plan to move forward. So they've been really rich conversations that have, you know, touched upon a lot of different things in the building. And we felt like aligning the NEASK feedback with the strategic plan would probably be the best approach at this time, because that's really prescriptive feedback from an outside organization on where we need to move. And so our next meeting is on February 4th, and hopefully by the end of that, we'll have some sort of goals. We have a couple folks from our school improvement team here in the audience as well.
Did they wave?
There you go.
All right, yeah. In the back?
Yep. And then from our PTO, we have Holly Patterson and Carly Cesarelli. Carly has not been able to attend yet, but Holly's been.
When does your, yeah, when does your NEASK visit begin?
So it's a little different than it's been in years past. So they come out first, and they do a collaborative conference where they look at things not as in-depth as they used to, and they make recommendations. And so now, in the spring of 2021.
Do they already do that?
Yes. So that's where we got that feedback from. So it was this past school year, and that report came out at the end of the year. And so now, in the spring of 2021, they'll come back out, and they'll want to measure where we are in relation to those four goals. Got any questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Leary?
Mr. Chairman, you addressing during this the attendance issues in your school? Are you addressing during the attendance issues? The school improvement team?
That is something that we can definitely look at as a part of the school improvement plan, but that was not something that we initially were talking about.
Okay. I'm just a little concerned still. I know at the beginning of the year, things go up. You know how many kids are absent? I know I should take that back and say, how many incidents of absences did Tati have last week?
Off the top of my head, I don't have it in mind.
918.
What?
You know? So it's important that we address that to get them in school. So it comes out weekly, as you see it too. So last time you're here, you mentioned you're going to get from me going back three years. I like to see each month, see Rogers getting better. September from 17, 18, 19, October 17, 18, 19, and see if there's improvement. Always in the beginning of the year, there's improvement. But as the year goes on, as you can see, last week was not a good week, when you have over 900 kids. Incidents, key word, of absenteeism and tardy. You know? That should be part of the school improvement team.
It is definitely something, that's definitely a focal area in the building, is working on attendance and getting kids into school. We're doing a lot of things with how we intervene with kiddos coming into school. We're leveraging the AmeriCorps folks. We've shifted our policy around being eligible for athletics and extracurriculars and being able to access social events such as dances and games. And there are a lot of, there's a lot of contact happening at home. So, yeah, it is definitely something that's on the forefront of our work, definitely.
Thank you.
Can I ask one other question?
Boebright.
Yeah, just on the curriculum piece, you said you're trying to put together a written curriculum that's tied and paired with assessments and so on. Could you just speak just a little bit to that?
So right now, what we're doing by department in some of our CPT or in department meetings, we're mapping backwards. So we're looking at midterm assessments or end-of-year assessments, and then mapping backwards what we want kids to know and understand, and then looking at having assessments that align so that each teacher that teaches that content is delivering those assessments. And so we're really being strategic about how we're moving backwards, and Kim might be able to talk at some point about our UBDs and how we're building that.
So is that just CTE or all the classes, or is it?
So it's all in departments.
Or everything?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Welcome.
Just to bring to everyone's attention, Mr. Leary, if you go back into the reports for C-tree, you can, there is a comparison between last year and this year for Rogers and all the schools. It's in your backup?
All right, so I've asked before, we get this in printout, everybody here gets the same thing. If they can use that same format, it makes it a lot easier to make when you're doing it, because you see who's tardy, who's absent, who's excused, who's unexcused, and going forward. When you just give a number, as they do in C-tree, is one thing.
Right.
NEASK can do this.
The Aspen, you mean Aspen?
Sorry, Aspen, thank you.
Okay.
Aspen. They can do it, because I know they've done it for a year before in the past, and there's no extra cost for us. It doesn't cost monthly, it doesn't cost weekly, it doesn't cost for year, and that's how you do your comparisons. And always in the beginning of the year, being a former teacher, beginning of the year, the kids are always in there. This is when it starts dropping off a lot. And it seems like last week is a good incident of when you see 918 incidents of absences and tardy.
Okay, so last week, there's a couple of things you have to note. It was an unusual week. We had a delay because of snow, and that always impacts our attendance when we delay. The other thing is, I believe you had parent conferences last week? So we had parent conferences last week at Rogers as well. So that was a different type of week for the high school. But let me talk with Ms. Schlockman about the Aspen reporting and see if we can do the same thing we're doing for the C-tree for you on a week-to-week basis as well. I don't know if we have that, but, so you can see from week to week. Okay.
Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, I check those numbers every day, as Mr. Leary does, and a couple of things that, in the back of my mind, probably three things. It's the unexcused absences and tardinesses that bother me, because if a student, if you get any of these kids, if they're not feeling well, and I'm sure any teachers out there will say, please stay home. Because coming into school, besides not being great for the youngster, it's not great for everyone else. That's number one. Even the tardinesses, there may be some legitimate reasons. The numbers seem to be rather high. But again, I look at the numbers, but I'm wondering what the percent is of the student body. So I mean, you could have 20 students out on a particular grade at Thompson and 20 students out at a grade at the high school. What percentage of that grade is it? Now, I'm sure the people working all of this data collection, they have enough to do. And I suppose if we have nothing else to do, we can figure out the percentages. But that's important, too. When you're walking in here, they'll say, you know, 90-some percent of the students were present today. And that kind of means a lot more than just the number. Both are important. But I think also, we have to take a lot into consideration. As you said, when you had the day with the late arrival, it could have been any of a number of reasons why some didn't come. And then furthermore, when there is illness. And to me, it should be incumbent upon parents or guardians to contact the school quickly, say, you know, my child so-and-so will not be in today because of illness or whatever the reason is. That's an important point. And that's something that you wouldn't have, and it has to be an adult making the call. Email, anyone can do that. So I think there's just one little thing that the parents and guardians, I think, would help with some of this data collection.
Okay, it is in your background, but I just want to, number 10.5, just for all of you. Mr. Leary, they did get the information for you. And for last year, the entire year, there were 34,497 incidents of absences. 34,497. The total number of attendance incidents were 351,084.
Yeah.
So you have 34,497, and you have 351,084 of attendance.
Thank you.
That's, it makes it look a little bit...
Can I just clarify something that was delivered earlier from our student body around National History Day? So this year, we are doing National History Day, but it's different. So students will still be presenting and delivering projects to their classroom, but it's going to be classroom-based. Kiddos that are interested in pursuing the National History Day indication, we're going to support those kids through that process. But right now, we are doing it, but we're doing it a little bit different. And then next year, we'll be back to where we were. So I just, it's not that we're not doing it. Just wanted to be clear.
Ms. Bowlin?
So we had a question earlier, somebody presented. I don't know if you're leaving, so the question about history, why is you in history?
That's the next presentation.
Okay, it's the next presentation, so you're staying, okay.
Or another presentation.
All right. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
That's coming up. Thank you. The next presentation this evening is a presentation on the collaborative work that was done with us pre-K in the University of Rhode Island. Tonight, we have, excuse me, we have occupational therapist Carrie Smith and pre-K teacher Janice Masserelli, who worked with the pre-K students in the University of Rhode Island on a research study last spring to assess the benefits of educational material created by PBS kids. Ms. Smith and Mrs. Masserelli will share their experience and highlight the collaborative work between Newport Public Schools and the University of Rhode Island on how this experience has informed the broader community of teachers, parents, and researchers. So you're on. You can step right up and...
Okay, I want to thank the teachers and the university for all this work. I know how important it is, and I want to thank Director Andreid for putting this all together. My understanding is you've got a lot of great things to share with us right now. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can't you just give them signals to do something?
No, I was just saying, they really have done all the publicity here. I'd like to say, yes, that sounds like a great idea, because they have really done all the...
I wasn't sure if you were giving a signal, that's all. I was just trying to...
Janice has asked me to talk about the preschool initiatives we've been working on. The team has actively sought professional development opportunities that are relevant to preschool and special needs population. Two major programs we have participated in, one is the Incredible Years Training. All staff participated. And then the second is our URI research study, The Cat and the Hat. We're looking to further our professional development this year. We're working on Wilson Foundations to collaborate with kindergarten teachers and kids transitioning up from us. And we're continuing our collaboration with URI regarding preschool education and development.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce our preschool team here. We have Mary Souza, who's a paraprofessional.
Pleasure, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
I'm Talia Powers, special ed. Hannah Vieira, paraprofessional. Susan Hatch, special ed teacher. Terry Burgess, paraprofessional. Catherine Jones, paraprofessional. Sabrina Mello, paraprofessional. Nicole Bussier, who you met, early child coordinator. Carrie Smith, occupational therapist. Dr. Kathy Olson, physical therapist. Christine Davis, our speech and language therapist. And Susan Potter, the paraprofessional child outreach screener.
You're doing a good job buying time for you.
I know. I didn't want to go on.
Kathy's trying hard.
You just had to show up, and it came on.
It's just the aura, Tracy. It was just the aura of you all there.
However, we were asked to share the highlight of last year, which was our participation in the URI research study. The pre-K program was asked to participate in a research study of preschool children assessing the benefits of educational material created by PBS kids. The University of Rhode Island, the U.S. Department of Education, and PBS wanted to investigate how media is helping preschoolers aged four to five learn in the areas of science and engineering. learn in the areas of science and engineering. Over a nine-week period, researchers from URI visited the classroom to assess participants' science knowledge and practices. The children were assessed in the classroom by answering questions pertaining to science and technology. They needed to choose a picture response and create a drawing of what a scientist looked like to them. The research study also utilized tablets preloaded with videos and digital games. For every preschool participant, the Newport School Department earned a free Kindle tablet for the classroom. In addition, each preschool student who participated in the study received a free Kindle tablet for home. When the study was complete, the students were able to keep these tablets. I am proud to share that of all the districts invited to participate, Newport had the greatest parent-child participation in the study, resulting in 30 new classroom tablets. The teach, as my responsibility, after a baseline was established, I was asked to incorporate 30 minutes of content into the classroom each week. But the children were so excited about the topics, I taught the mini-curriculums five days a week. Center time also incorporated time to experiment with the topics taught during instructional time. Tablet time was also encouraged during this time to offer more educational screen time. URI provided all the supplies for each instructional unit. The instructional content areas, the first one was exploring the properties of materials, dealing with building bridges. The concept taught was that different materials can be used to build bridges, some better than others. And just to give you some, an example of some of the vocabulary that the children were exposed to, was properties, rigid, flexible, strong, fragile, length, span, collapse. I mean, very tight, very, and the kids loved it. After group instruction, the children were asked to build bridges with all the provided materials. We have pictures of the kids and everything. The next topic was surfaces of materials. We taught children about friction. Different surfaces would cause different amounts of friction, sometimes helpful and sometimes not. After direct instruction, the children explored friction by using ramps with different textures.
By the time, could you give us the makeup of the class?
There it is. So you just had to say her name. So keep, keep it moving.
Okay.
Keep it moving.
Keep going, keep going, okay.
Friction.
Yep, friction.
That's one of the words you missed that vocabulary test.
Okay, the next unit was on density, whether materials would sink or float. The students would shape materials in different ways to change their air pockets. Hence, the items would sink or float. The children were asked to design boats made from foil and test whether they did sink or float. Numerous materials were tested. And some of the vocabulary was sink, float, air pocket, density, properties, buoyant, and persistent. And the fourth topic was sorting by multiple attributes. The concept was that objects and materials can be sorted in many ways, including by their attribute. After formal instruction, the children were asked to sort objects by multiple attributes, along with playing the Sort-a-rama game that was preloaded on the tablets. Oh, I'm sorry, you can read it. The vocabulary was sort, organize, observant, properties, narrow, and wide. Your turn.
One aspect of the study is that all the pre-K students that were going into kindergarten were invited to participate as long as their parents signed up and agreed to it. Regardless of, it's fine, I don't have any more pictures. Regardless of their abilities. One of the students that we had last year had, was autistic, she had autism, and pretty severe autism. And we were trying to figure out how we could include her. If you gave her the tablet, she threw it, so she wasn't able to access the study the same way. So being OT, that was right up my alley. So I kind of took the lead with this student and collaborated with Lisa Jones from URI. She was great, she was one of the researchers. And she and I were trying to figure out how we could include this student in the study. One of the areas that the study was looking at was how the perception of a scientist, how the kids perceived what a scientist was, what a scientist looked like, changed over the, was it nine weeks? Nine weeks. So they were asked to draw a picture of a scientist multiple times. So we decided to focus on the task of drawing a scientist for this one student. So we made some visuals for the student to choose, for her to help, to help her build the scientist. The other students were asked to draw the pictures to include the scientist's race, gender, age, what the scientist was doing, where the scientist was. So we decided that we were going to have those pictures, which was all great until we realized it was way too many. It was too overwhelming, too much for her. So then we decided to narrow it down to three different areas. We were going to look at gender, race, and then, for some reason, Lisa decided hairstyle. So we were looking at male, female, was it a male or a female scientist? Did the scientist have light skin or dark skin? And did the scientist have normal hair or crazy hair? Because some of the kids would think a crazy scientist. Again, after trying to introduce those, we realized that they had, those pictures had no meaning to this student. The pictures didn't mean anything to her, so we then realized we have to teach her what these pictures mean. So I ended up making a book, a visual of just the male, a boy and a girl, light skin, dark skin, crazy hair, normal hair, and the paras, Ms. Terri being one of them. Worked with her last year, would read her the book every day. They also had the pictures in the class, and they would label them with her throughout the day, just for the reinforcement. And then, we had to take some data to see if she was learning what we were presenting with her. So we randomized it, and I would have a board that had two pictures, and I would say, "Okay, give me the girl." And then, we would, I would tally up how many times she was correct. But the problem with that is, we realized that she wasn't a student that was just going to sit there and listen to you and pick off it. She was up and out of her seat, all over the place. I was following her around with the board. But one thing we noticed is that every time that I would ask her, say, "Where's, you know, give me the light skin," she would look at the board, pretty much look at the light skin, look away, get up, run away. So we decided that we would start to use eye gaze as her telling us, instead of her having to pick. Because a lot of times, she just would randomly reach, would go in the middle, and something would fall off. So, once we started to accept her eye gaze, she went from having, before, and I did have a chart up there, but before we were accepting the eye gaze, she had a lot of 0% accuracies for getting the question correct. After we started accepting the eye gaze, the lowest that she had was, I think, if I could see this on this tiny thing, was 40% accuracy. So although this student never really got to build a scientist, the takeaway was much bigger. For her, she was introduced to new vocabulary. She was starting to working on distinguishing, you know, that a picture has a meaning, and that pictures have labels, and the more, well, not more exciting, because that was great for her. But the exciting thing for the study was that Dr. Sweetman, who was the head of the study, shared with us that she went to a connected learning conference with other educational game designers, and she was talking to them about this research. And they were talking about researching games that were intentionally developed to include children of all abilities. And she had told them what we had done to adapt the study, and they all thought that that was incredibly unique, and it was very exciting, and people wanted to learn more about it. So, which leads us to the continued results of our study.
So the results, I'm sorry, the results of the project. The final report will be released in March, closer to Dr. Souza's birthday. PBS Kids is eager to share the outcome of the research project. They considered it very successful. In brief, the children who are situated in families that made less than $25,000 a year made the greatest gains from the beginning to the end of the study, and caught up to their peers in understanding the nature of science and engineering. In addition, Newport students in particular moved from sensationalized views of science and engineering to more accurate contemporary views. URI is excited to announce that they are moving forward with the development of educational curriculum to accompany the upcoming PBS Kids Eleanor Wonders Why Media. The project will begin in December and continue through the release of the show in September 2020. They are building a team of experts in early childhood education that can inform, test, and evaluate materials and resources that support STEM teaching and learning in preschool classrooms. We are even more excited to announce that Newport Public School preschool program has been asked to participate in this new adventure. And only three cities and towns in Rhode Island were asked, and we were one of them.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I just?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to the preschool team. They did such a great job with the study. And tonight, I'm like a little choked up, actually, sorry. You guys did such a great job, and that's the reason that you were chosen to continue with the study. So, thank you.
I have to say, I am totally shocked and amazed that just through the gaze and the change, when I looked at the data, I couldn't get over it. And you're sparking something, new information, and helping us to learn better how we can address all children's needs. So, I agree with Candace, I'm kind of choked up, too, but you, amazing, thank you. I always say, if you're having a bad day, go to JFK. Really. Thank you. And I believe we have another person that wants to share with, also, for our bilinguals.
Yes, so we have been partnering with URI at Pell to do a URI bilingual literacy grant. So we're going to do a quick update with Dr. Vanessa Harwood.
Good evening. First, I have to say congratulations to the URI preschool research team. Go Rhodey. There's a lot of Rhodey love in the house tonight, so.
All right, I'm a Friar.
I'm actually a Friar, too. Friar to Rhodey, yeah, believe it or not. Well, thank you for this opportunity to provide a brief update on the University of Rhode Island bilingual literacy study. My name is Vanessa Harwood, I'm an assistant professor.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. My name is Vanessa Harwood, I'm an assistant professor in the Department of Communication Disorders at URI, and a co-investigator on the project, along with my colleague, Dr. Elisa Brown, who unfortunately wasn't able to be with us tonight. We are also so grateful to collaborate with the Newport School District on this timely project. This study, Neurobiological Markers of Literacy Development in Bilingual and Monolingual Children, includes a comprehensive examination of the language and literacy profiles for our monolingual and bilingual first and second grade students. The end goal of this project is to create tailored and specific literacy interventions for our at-risk readers. The data acquired from the study will be analyzed and shared with the Pell School Administration, Ronnie Lee Mooney, as well as teachers, to support evidence-based decisions regarding curriculum development for English-language learners. This data will also be instrumental in developing tailored and specific summer interventions for our underperforming students. We have recently completed the first of four time points within our study. We have enrolled 46 children between first and second grade whose language and literacy progression will be tracked until the summer of 2021. We have obtained detailed data regarding their English and Spanish language and literacy skills. We have also worked to understand how monolingual and bilingual brains adapt and change over time using EEG and eye-attracting technologies. We have had the wonderful opportunity to connect with many families to discuss language and literacy habits within the home, and to encourage beneficial reading strategies to support academic success here at Pell. We would like to extend a sincere thank you to the Pell Administration, particularly Tracy Westman and Ronnie Lee Mooney, who have worked consistently to ensure the success of this project. We would also like to sincerely thank Rebecca Gomez and Mark McKenna, who have connected with families and have supported recruitment. Finally, we thank the amazing Pell teachers, who have worked with us over the past few months. Through our collaborations, we have identified critical areas for growth, including characteristics of bilingualism and inclusive literacy practices for at-risk students. These characteristics of bilingualism and inclusive practices will be points for professional development, provided by the URI research team for Pell staff during scheduled professional development periods. We look forward to returning to Pell in the spring of 2020 and begin our second data collection period. We remain dedicated to this project and are excited to support the students of Pell and their literacy success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for coming tonight. Thank you.
Next segment of the meeting would be public comment. Mrs. Nash, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay. Next is action items. First action item is 6.1, request for approval of RFP NPS 20-011 for the Newport Public Schools boiler control systems. And I believe we have Mr. Harap here this evening, who can give us an overview on this request.
Good evening, Tom Harap, Superintendent of Facilities for the City of Newport, Newport Public Schools. So the purpose of the RFP for the boiler control system is really twofold. Had multiple meetings with the plant engineers, and we've determined that the boiler control systems, just are not working correctly, primarily because they're not updated. So they really need to be worked on and improved. That's step one, is they have to be able to control the boiler systems. The second part of that is working with city MIS. We have to ensure that the boiler control systems are in no way connected to the database, to the network. Connecting those to the database and network will just open up another window or another opportunity for corrupting the system. And we know the time, expense, and effort that they put into resolving that issue. So working closely with Jim O'Halloran, we wanted to make sure that when we do the new boiler control systems, that they're actually designed and not just something off the shelf that's installed by the vendor, and we'll get a correct system that will fix all of our problems and enable the plant engineers to operate the systems correctly. This particular project is a professional services project, which has been out through RFP and would fall to the city as a capital improvement, as do all professional services projects that are supported by the city and funded by the city, have to be presented to the city council. So I actually have in front of me here right now, I've got with me the council action form and all attachments that I submitted to the city council to be included in tomorrow night's city council meeting to gain the authorization to fund the project with the CIP line item that's in the city budget. So in a nutshell, that's it. We want them to be able to operate the boiler systems correctly. We need to ensure that they are not in any way connected to the network system in opening up a window for potential corruption.
Any questions? Mrs. Bowlen, I mean, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bowright?
Two questions. Will they have an impact on the heating distribution once this is done, to be better temperature control?
Well, that's exactly what the boiler control systems are for, so they can take care of the setbacks when they need setbacks, manage the controls within the rooms when they need to change settings in different zones of the building.
So it will be an improvement, correct?
It will be an improvement.
Thank you. And the second question is, I know you've been working on an RFP, I believe, for the TMS boiler itself, is that true?
I actually received bids for the TMS boiler on December 20th, and that will be presented to the city council to gain approval for using the funding in the January meeting.
Okay, great. Great. Good news. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the RFP as presented this evening.
Still moved.
Motion made by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bowright. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is Mr. Harrop. He'll stare right up there for a moment. It's a request for approval of change order related to national grid lighting upgrades at Thompson Middle School. And Mr. Harrop has some information on that for us as well.
So, the change order that we're addressing right now is $7,200. It's for unforeseen conditions with the wiring and other elements of the existing lighting system that is under contract in Thompson to be replaced. And in order for this project to be completed within the timeline that's required to take advantage of the incentives, Jerry Drummond from National Grid, who could not be here, has informed us, we really need to move forward and get the project done this year. Literally, they have a number of days is all they have left to complete what's currently on the OBR or on-bill repayment agreement to finish the project pending approval of the change for $7,200 extra dollars for the unforeseen conditions. And just when it comes to the unforeseen, it's all related to wiring, and there's really no way they could have foreseen the changes that are required in the wiring without deconstructing the lights first, which certainly the vendor's not going to go in, is not taking out lights to determine what's going on with the wiring. So.
Very good. Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the recommended request for the 7,200, I believe it's 7,233. Is that correct?
72 even. 72. 7,200.
7,200. So, a motion would be in order to approve the 7,200 change order as requested. Ms. Bowright, motion to approve, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next act, next action item is 6.3, request for acceptance of grant from Newport Public Education Foundation for the purchase of iPads for Pell Elementary Schools. Do you think Dr. Jermaine has some information on that?
Yes. Through the generous contribution by Mr. and Mrs. William Egan, they would like to donate $25,000 to Pell Elementary School, particularly for and to be for purchase of iPads. I know in your backup it said 70, but we're just saying for Apple iPads, and we'll purchase as many as possible with that. I don't want to limit us if we can do more.
Okay, so a motion would be in order to accept the grant money as proposed.
Still moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion, questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is 6.4, to request for acceptance of Newport Public Education Foundation teacher enrichment grants. Superintendent Jermaine, I believe you.
Yes, again, through generous donations, particularly from the Newport Public Ed Foundation. The foundation has awarded $22,500 to the Newport Public Schools for teacher enrichment grants. The teachers applied for these grants at all three schools. Pell Elementary School will receive $3,795. Thompson Middle School, $9,165. And Rogers High School, $9,545.
Motion would be in order to accept the grant as, accept the grant as presented this evening.
Yes.
Made by Ms. Bowright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye with a big thank you.
Yes, very big thank you.
Yes, once again, we're very fortunate of the generosity of our public supporters and partners in the community to step up when asked and contribute, especially to Newport Public Education Foundation, which continually raises funds around the clock, year-round, and supports our teachers in all their endeavors. So, without their help, it would be a different situation for sure.
And Mr. Chair, may I? We've just been notified that we're also, Pell Elementary School will receive an additional $15,000 to the Lottie Music Foundation, and that is going to be deposited directly to the city next week.
Very good. Once again, thank you to our partners and supporters. Next action item is 6.6, I'm sorry, 6.5, request for approval of school building committee recommendations regarding pre-K permanent solutions. I know it says Dr. Jermaine, but I think Ms. Bowlen, Ms. Bowright is going to speak.
No, I think Dr. Jermaine is going to start on.
Okay.
All right, I'll start off. At our recent school building committee meeting, the board of that group recommended for a permanent pre-K solution, and that permanent pre-K solution is in addition to Pell Elementary School. Provided in your backup, were the options that the board had reviewed, and if you look at the second to last one, you'll notice that the addition to Pell is for $10,784,750. This is what the school building board committee, sorry, school building committee is recommending for a permanent solution to our overcrowding at Pell Elementary School and to also bring back our pre-K students to Newport.
And also the temporary solution, right?
I believe that's another item.
That's the next agenda item. So, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the school building committee as presented this evening?
Still moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bowright. Is there any discussion or questions on it?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larry.
Ms. Jermaine, how many rooms are we talking about? This is $10 million.
I do not have the, it's eight rooms. Thank you.
So, right now, we have three preschool rooms.
Correct.
Why are you doing the eight?
Because at this point in time, Mr. Larry, every year since this school building has been open, Ms. Westman and her teachers have to juggle, relocate teachers based upon the enrollment. So, we've never been really able to fully satisfy the year-to-year fluctuation in enrollment, and we've had to relocate people. So, in order to make sure we have the ability to be flexible, and I'm going to be frank for the staff, so they know where their classrooms are located every August, we'd like to make sure that not only with this addition, we have appropriate rooms for our pre-K, but we're right-sized for the population we have now. And to forego any worry in the future for music and art rooms having to be considered, and I know that was a big item, it was before my time, but I know that was a big item that the residents and taxpayers and people of Newport really wanted to ensure that their children continue to have the arts and these programs not be interrupted.
Also, can I point out that when, you know, we're going towards universal pre-K, and that's going to be a full-day program, so whereas right now it's consuming three classrooms, it would be consuming six to take care of those same kids.
Correct, if we had that at this time, yes.
So, you're counting on universal pre-K being passed?
Not for this recommendation, but we're planning, no, not for this recommendation, for the planning and the flexibility for this school and the rising enrollments we've been seeing. Again, it's to ensure that we have a building that is appropriately sized for our community. And I will say again, this is Studio Jade, this is the data they collected, this was the recommendation, and the diagrams and the plans were presented by them.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Larry. Next item, 6.6, request for approval of school building committee recommendation regarding pre-K temporary solution.
So, again, our pre-Ks are and have been located at the JFK Building in Middletown. We have made several attempts and to reach out to Middletown to see if we could be put on the agenda to be reconsidered for an extension of a lease. At this point in time, we have not been able to be successful at that, at that. So, in order to ensure we're ready and prepared for next school year, we needed to move forward with future planning for our little ones and what's going to happen with JFK. So, the school building committee reflected upon this and considered the options in front of us, and as you can see on the chart, the same chart I just quoted off of for the permanent solution, you saw that right now we're paying $105,777 to JFK as part of the rental lease agreement. Working with Principal Westman, doing a walk-through of the building, and also doing a cost analysis based upon what we believe will be needed in order to bring back our pre-K students, we, the school building committee voted to accept as a temporary option for our little ones, and we do mean temporary, to bring them back to Pell for now. So, the recommendation is to move our JFK pre-K program back to Pell Elementary School. We would need to start in the movement, we'd need to start to put things into action probably late March, early April, with storage bins and starting to map out the relocation that should happen in June of classrooms.
I'd like to make that motion.
So, motion to, so, yes, so there'd be a motion to approve as presented, made by Mrs. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Bowright. Is there any discussion or questions on the motion? Ms. Bowright.
Yeah. I just want to reiterate that this is a temporary solution because it's moving staff and teachers' locations, including their caf, their cafeterias. We're losing a music room again, and, you know, it would reduce some costs in the short term, but all to ensure that in the long term, we have enough space going forward to accommodate the entire pre-K, all the classrooms, even if when we first, as a school building committee, voted, we had said we wanted to have a pre-K to first grade because Thompson is going to start getting very up to capacity very soon. So, it's to build in a little bit of expansion. RID does allow the school buildings to be under 100% capacity, and that is absolutely critical in our school system. Thank you.
Ms. Bowlen.
Yeah, I wanted to add, first of all, this goes along with the temporary, the permanent solution in that when we were building Pell and we realized that we were going to have a problem, because if you build it, they will come, we had a group that met, and it was a city, you know, community-wide involvement to try to figure out a solution to this. And our number-one recommendation coming out of this was to put an extension on to Pell, but it wasn't feasible at that time. So, we went, we then said, put pods, you know, add pods, but our, the recommendation was truly, you know, put the addition on. And so, this temporary solution, I just want to add that, you know, Mrs. Westman and the staff at Pell are very excited to actually have all the kids back in one building, and she, she was very clear about that to everyone, that that is going to be a definite bonus to everything that takes place here at Pell School, educationally.
Good point.
Dr. Flowers.
Just briefly, in view of the rather exciting presentation we just had on one part of the wonderful things that are going on with the pre-K youngsters, this, that should really inspire us to support all of this. It really should.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Larry.
Could they review for the public which rooms were taken back besides the music room?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Larry.
Could they review for the public which three rooms are taken back besides the music room?
It's a possibility the music room may be taken back. If you look in the backup that was provided.
I see.
Oh, okay. So, two first-grade rooms and one special education room will be relocated. If we open with eight first grades, they'll need to use one music room on the first floor. One grade two from the C wing upper will be moved to the A wing lower. And for those on television or listening, that's the lower school and the upper school, the upper school, and one grade two from the upper school will be moved down to the wing in the lower school. The other thing is grade four classrooms will be closed or replaced by a three, a grade three classroom. That's due to population shift. A special education room from C wing lower will be relocated. A resource teacher will be relocated to a smaller room in A wing upper. And the research teacher will also be relocated to a breakout room in the A wing. Our community partners in the main office, we're going to relocate them, and the staff lounge will be relocated to another location on the second floor of the building. Pre-K screeners, which will be coming over to our building, will move into the main office, so they'll be more accessible to parents and families as they come into the I think I got it all covered.
And we're purchasing sheds?
Pardon?
We're purchasing two sheds.
Oh, at least. Oh, you want, okay. And then the storage? Yes. At least, Ms. Westman's recommended at least two vinyl-sided storage sheds. We have already approached Mr. Frer in the carpentry room and construction to see if they'll be able to help us. They have a very tight schedule, but he is looking at it. We may need some partitions for some of the rooms, some shelves for extra storage, bins for storage, and the possibility of new rugs and some furniture. The very broad-based costs.
So, I have a very good working relationship with the Middletown Town Council President, and I've been in contact with him numerous times the last few days. So, it's on the agenda for December 16th for the contracts. So, they're going to be discussing the contracts renewals on December 16th on their Middletown meeting. So, for that reason, I'm not sure it's going to pass. They have bigger, bigger plans for their school in that area, but it is on the agenda for discussion. So, they may get a couple, obviously, unless we vote now not to do it, they may get a couple bids from the other people, like Newport Community School and, is it not Head Start, what they call the other, the other group that pays us?
Head Start is in there now, yes.
So, right now, there's only one lease. Am I correct?
There are two leases, one with the Newport Community School, they have their own lease, and we have a lease.
Right. So, the leases have been submitted by Newport Community School and by Head Start to use that building. We're not in that right now. So, for that reason, in case they pass it, I'm not going to support it. I don't believe they will pass it. They have bigger ideas, they have work to do in the building. But that being said, you know, they're meeting next week to discuss this, and we're meeting now to say no to them. So, I'm saying no.
Mr. Larry, I just want for clarification, no one has notified me about any potential to renew the lease. No one has contacted me from the Middletown Council, and I've made numerous inquiries to them about being put on the agenda to request an extension. I am aware of a letter that the Newport Community School sent to Middletown requesting if they could have renewed their lease, but I am not aware of any offer for renewal of any leases.
Their reason, and I don't want to speak for them, is that they have been doing some valuation of the building, what needs to be done, possibly part of the roof, possibly some upkeep, so they're not ready to do that right now. They may not be ready on next week's meeting, but that being said, until that's solved, I can't support this.
Just for, may I? For my clarification, you're saying they're not sure if their building needs additional repairs?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Next item on the agenda is 6.7, request for approval of school building committee to appoint owner-project manager for stage-two portion of the RID application. And I believe Ms. Bowright, Ms. Bowright's going to discuss this.
I'm just going to say, this is for the I'm just going to say, this is for the owner's project manager, which is to review, enhance, improve Newport's stage one application to RIDE. Newport Public School used the M.
MPA.
MPA by RIDE for their approved list of OPM work. Eight applications were submitted, reviewed, five were, we had five come in for interviews, which were held over five hours. There were three finalists that were asked to submit a not-to-exceed proposal. Our interview team reviewed all the not-to-exceed proposals that were submitted. Two were sent in, one firm decided not to bid on that. And then the review team has decided by looking at the proposals and their scope of work that we have unanimously just selected Downs Construction pending the review of our attorney and a contract execution.
So is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the school building committee made by Ms. Boland, seconded by Dr. Flowers? Is there discussion or questions on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just came out late. What day did this come out for, the actual picking of company?
It was today.
Today?
Yes.
And we're voting on it now?
Yes.
Is that not policy?
I'm not quite sure that it's in the policy, but it's a recommendation of the school building committee.
They're all members of the school building committee that did this. We had a form that we used in order to rate the different vendors, which we shared as backup to the committee.
And I will add, I'm not sure if there is a policy on that. I know there is a policy that you're allowed to use in a master price agreement rather than an RFP that was approved last month. And I will say that it is contingent on review by Mr. Galvin, our attorney, prior to the execution of the contract. So again, that review would determine if there was any policies violated or irregularities before that would move forward, so.
So I think there is something in the policy, but for that reason, who are the other two companies, by the way? You said you had three finalists?
Yes, Farrar decided not to submit a bid, and the other one was Peregrine.
So, I guess, Mr. Larry in the backup. Thank you, sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Larry, you have been provided with all the backup, all the questions, all the, everything about each candidate. The only thing you were not given at this, that point in time was the recommendation. And I believe the co-chairs also sent in everything after that decision was made and notified everyone.
That's not the point.
So I just, I just want to let you know you've had all the backup.
That's not the point. The point is, if I was to make an action item tonight, I couldn't have done that today. So you made an action item on us voting on something that they made a decision on today.
This was put in ahead of time, though.
When did you make a decision on it?
It has been on the agenda as an action item.
When did you make a decision on it? Ask the question, please.
After we received the responses.
Today, yesterday?
Today, yes.
Thank you.
And we met as a committee, and, and this was always in the plan.
So, so there's a motion, the motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion, seeing none?
Wait, Mr. Harrop wants to say something.
Mr. Harrop.
Yeah. So this isn't truly a discussion of the whole thing, it's just more of, you're going to need funding to pay for this. So I would assume that somebody is putting together a package with a recommendation for the city council because they would provide the funding to pay for this.
This is, no, we have the funding.
Okay, go ahead.
The funding, so RIDE provided $100,000 for work done above and beyond any contracts that have been signed. So that's the funding mechanism for this contract.
So this is going to be your OPM for the entire?
No. No, this is just for stage two.
All right, well, I, I'm just mentioning it because I had a meeting with the city manager today, and, you know, he unfortunately didn't have any background on anything that was going on. So he asked me, and I told him I would, you know, obviously we have this meeting tonight. So that, that's a good point to understand, that this isn't the OPM. Because obviously, an OPM for a whole project, it's going to be substantially more than $100,000.
Yes, no.
Correct. And Mr. Nicholson may call me anytime.
Yeah, so.
Right, this is a short-term contract just to review the stage two, as I had, I think I said that, stage two application, to make sure, to, so they're just reviewing, enhancing, improving to ensure that it is high quality and that there's, you know, had really a second opinion for a very large, you know, proposal.
Well, that's great, just a clarification. I call that an opportunity meeting with Mr. Nicholson because we're meeting on another project, so he just happened to ask.
Mm-hmm, that's okay. No, good question.
Okay, so there's a motion before us. I unfortunately, due to professional ties to several of the companies, will be recusing myself from the vote this evening. But the motion is made and seconded, and there's no other discussion. We'll call the mo, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to one.
Thank you. And there's, wait, can we introduce? Yeah, okay, I'd like to introduce, I think we have somebody here from the firm that just, you know, won the contract. Downs, did you?
Joe DeSanti.
You have to sit up.
If you could just, yeah, if you don't mind stepping up, just identify yourself for the folks that are viewing at home and.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Joe DeSanti. I'm a project executive and program director for Downs Construction. And I just want to say, we are very excited about helping and working and helping Newport through this process.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Very much, thank you for being here this evening.
We'll see you soon.
Yeah.
Very soon.
Next, next action item is 6.8, request for approval of the Newport School Committee regular meeting calendar for 2019. Is there a motion to approve the school committee meeting calendar as presented?
Someone.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boland. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 6.9 is a request for approval of policy 3155 Business Fund Management on Second Reading. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this as presented this evening?
Yep.
Ms. Boland, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Is there any question or discussion on the second reading? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. 610, 6.10, request for approval of policy 6392 Instructional Resources and Materials and Funding of Field Trips on the Second Reading. Is there a motion to approve this presented this evening? Ms. Boland, seconded by Mrs., motion made by Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Boland. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, four to one. That moves us into the next act, next item is discussion. Discussion this evening will be Rogers High School diploma requirements, and I believe it's Dr. Jermaine and Mr. Vance will be.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, it's going to be Mr. Vance and Mr. Monahan, since scheduling's involved in part of this, I believe. Or did I call someone up that doesn't? We're reviewing the Rogers High School diploma in particular, especially since we're looking at the diploma requirements that were sent, set many years ago. If they're the courses we want to continue to be offering and also at the same time be aligned to the RIDE requirements. So this is a process, and this is the beginning of the process. I foresee as time evolves and technology, career paths, et cetera evolve, we'll continue to work on this. But I'm now going to hand it over to the two gentlemen here.
So we've started discussions with department chairs about our current graduation requirements. Over the last, I think it was three, maybe four years ago, a previous commissioner of RIDE modified the requirements that high schools need to uphold in order to certify students for graduation. I don't believe we have made any changes based on those changes. They're, they're minor changes. Our current graduation requirements, which I'll briefly review, are four years of English, four years of math, three years of science, two with a lab component, three years of social studies. One year needs to be U.S. History II, a course called U.S. History II. Four semesters of physical education and health, or JROTC. One semester of technology, one semester of art or music, and then electives that will total 24 credits for the current senior class, and from there on, 20 credits for the sophomores, or the junior sophomores, freshmen, and all the classes that come after that. That is a recent change, I believe, that, you know, our senior class is the last class with the old requirement. Three years ago, three years ago, correct. So at this time, though, we've, we've talked about, you know, we've taken a look at the courses that we offer. They closely, they're pretty close to mirror just about every other high school in the state's requirements. Though we have some thoughts about possible future changes, we did not feel like there's a need to change right now. If we were to make a change, it would be with the incoming freshman class for next year. Right now, I think that we need to focus on really getting common assessments in place and really getting our current curriculum in place, more than we need to start changing which courses students need to take in order to graduate. There's a statewide initiative where RIDE is looking at what our public colleges and universities here, Rhode Island College and URI, what they require for admission, which is not the same as what RIDE requires for graduation. We anticipate some changes based on that study. Right now, they're just getting the information out, and then they're working to make recommendations for changes in the future. So I think we should wait and see what, what they come up with as well. With what we have, even though we've reduced it from 24 credits to 20, we have, with all those requirements, that, that lessening of the total number of units is not going to make it any easier because students typically have struggles with the English and the math, of which they need to grad, they need to pass four credits each to graduate. It's not, it's, it's very challenging. The high achievers have great options. The students who struggle for many different reasons have the opportunity to remediate and to, you know, get their skills up so that they can graduate. So we think we have a good plan, and we think we have a lot of work to do to make what we have better. And that's where we stand right now.
Ms. Boland.
I have a question about mathematics. So you list four years. Does that include Algebra I and Algebra II? Do they have to pass Algebra II?
It does not specify. That's not, that is what RIDE is looking at with regard to getting into Rhode Island College or University of Rhode Island. They're expecting Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry.
Right, but I would say that for some of our students, you know, you know, Algebra II, you know, that's, are we, so do we don't, we don't make them pass Algebra II? But Algebra I?
Um, we, Algebra I is the entry-level course that we offer, so I guess implicitly we do.
So because, I mean, there are other math courses, and I just heard you say that you, maybe we should be making sure that we, you know, are offering the appropriate classes for all of our students, too, you know, and more math options. I just wonder, you know, I just know a lot of students really struggle with this, you know, math.
So the one, the one thing that we don't want to do is limit kids' options at the end of their high school career by what we offer their freshman year. Yes, our graduation requirement is saying how many years of math they need, but when looking at colleges, and not even our most competitive colleges, but just colleges, they're looking for that, that sequence of Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry. So if we offered something that was lower than that Algebra I, we're automatically shutting the door at the end of their four-year career by that choice automatically unless they doubled up on math. And I'm going to assume a student that was struggling in the beginning is most likely not going to double up on the math by the time they graduate.
So I'm going to challenge that by saying that, so from the eighth grade, right now, we only have like a third of our kids that come in ready for algebra. The rest of them, you know, you know what I mean, or for geometry, they start with algebra. So why couldn't we start, you know, like, if we didn't feel some were even ready for that algebra, start with something else? It doesn't really, it, it might not mean that you get to Algebra II, but is that really a problem? I'm just wondering if there's just enough courses that really will take our kids all the way through math.
We actually, we need to work with the middle school and figure out.
Right.
That, yeah, you bring up a good question, that we need to look further into. And, and some more of that question is, are we appropriately differentiating and making sure that not everybody can do exactly the same level of work, but that they can understand the concepts that Algebra I is all about? Some struggle with what differentiation is versus scaffolding. And we need to take, we need to look at the big picture there, and.
Hopefully that.
I don't, I did not, we didn't think that we were ready to make any major change right now, but we hear you, and we need to support the students who are struggling with algebra.
Ms. Bol, Ms. Boatright.
Yeah, one that stands out to me is the U.S. History II. I've never heard of that. I've always heard U.S. History is mandated, but I've never seen U.S. History II. Does that mean you have to do two years of U.S. History?
We, so US, we have two different, some call it modern world history, some call it European history. There are different names. We cover a lot of the same topics, but all schools are requiring three years of history, one to be U.S. History. Our naming may be misleading or make you think that we're spreading it out over two years. One is, has a heavier focus in civics, and the other in the modern world, United States Well, they don't have to pass.
Do they have to take two years of U.S. History is my question?
It's not a prerequisite, so they don't have to take U.S. I to take U.S. II. They could jump right in and take U.S. II, but they still need three years of social studies.
And the civics part that's now made it into the newspapers, that's only in U.S. History I?
Where, where it lands right now in our scope is in U.S. History I.
Uh-huh, so, but that's something you're going to look at potentially this year, just to?
Yeah, we've, we've, we've already discussed it since we started conversations earlier this year about that. We did discuss that with the department chair. I, I think as we.
Because if somebody wants to just take U.S. History with civics, you're making them take two years of U.S. History, it appears that way. Anyhow, I think it's something to be discussed.
Well, I mean, if a student hadn't, if a student came in as a junior, we wouldn't force them to take one before two, if that, one's not necessarily a straight prerequisite to the other. And if they didn't pass U.S. I and took U.S. II and then took social studies electives to get their three credits, they would graduate.
Can I ask you, how many students take one and two?
Most.
As a percentage?
Most?
Don't have it a percentage? Yeah, so right now, the, the sequence is the world history, the U.S. I, U.S. II. So the history in Rogers is, the vast majority of kids that earn their diploma have gone through those three courses presently.
I'm not sure that there's any hindrance as a result. I, I think that they cover different things that are, you know, perceived as important and that are very similar to the neighboring schools and all the others in the state and probably many in the country. If there were a reason for a student who maybe came in to. If there were a reason for a student who maybe came into Newport from, you know, for the War College or something like that, was here for a year, and they had a special request, I don't see why we couldn't meet that.
Ms. Bow.
So, I just want to point out, too, though, that many, many of our students take history and take science classes as their electives, so they graduate with more. Three is the minimum, but you, it's not unusual to find someone taking five over that four-year period, because they've take, we have a leadership class, psychology also is in the social studies department, so it's, and the same with the sciences, you know, that they really are promoted, and kids take a lot of them.
I think we, what do we have, 60 students, maybe, who are taking U.S. History Advanced Placement right now, instead of U.S. II? Which the U.S. I helps them to prepare, to get ready for that. So, that's a good thing.
So, we have this in front of you tonight, because the program of studies will be coming to you very shortly, because we're trying to advance the schedule as far as getting students signed up for courses in the future, so we can do better staffing counts, and we can also let the principal, assistant principal, the leadership team start to build the schedule, so that teachers, parents, students have an awareness of what their students will be in next year. So, that's why we're moving this calendar up for you. And part of your charge to me was to have the high schools start to reflect upon what they're offering, why they're offering it, is it appropriate, considering changing demographics, the new world, new technology, all of the above. So, I just wanted to share that out.
Ms. Bow.
I hate this, but I really thought of, the one thing I wanted to ask was, I know that really important to all of this is an AP rotation. Is that printed somewhere for next year? Is it going to be printed? So, the kids are going to know ahead of time what year they can get into AP Chem or whatever class, because that is, that is an issue.
Definitely. So, that'll be in the program of studies, and we're going to share that throughout the process of kids selecting courses. And it's really, the one that's in question is that biochemistry flip-flop each year, so that kids have equal access over the course of their four years. But yes, that will be printed, definitely.
I was on Portsmouth's, Portsmouth's website about their class schedule, and they're four-by-four, like we are, too, which I think is awesome. It's done great. They do limit their number of classes that a student can take to seven. So, I wonder, have you thought about that? But we'll talk about that later, but I want to mention that out there. On their website, that's what it says. You're saying that's not...
I know that students there can take eight. They strongly recommend ninth graders to take seven to start, and they encourage that learning center, so that, yeah, so that they can adjust to the transition of high school. But students are taking eight there. And 80% of our students are taking seven right now.
Okay, thank you.
Those are Portsmouth students, not ours. Right, that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I would say, our, we're probably around that as well.
So, Mr. Larry, go ahead.
Question, thank you. In education, there's always these buzzwords, drive me nuts. The most part is culture and climate. So, I guess my question is, is the climate the teachers approving of this?
What specifically?
Well, the whole setup, the way math, it seems like there's some concerns for Mrs. Bowlen, and from math, concerns about social studies. So, are the teachers bought into this?
That we're not changing anything?
No, that, that the way it's going right now.
The way things are going?
Right now, yeah, what presented to us.
So, there's always discussions about what kids come into the high school with, where are their strengths, where are their weaknesses? That happens throughout the course of their career as well, so that we do discuss courses and things that potentially might be able, need to be put into place or changes. Presently, we've been running with the same system with courses that has been in place for years.
So, I just had a question. On the sheet that we have, the last bullet point, I'm not sure if that refers to Mrs. Bowlen's question about a schedule of classes. I don't know what that sentence means. Yes.
The focus on 2021.
Yeah, focus on 2020, the last bullet point says revisit course selection process for students who select courses that won't run in 2021.
So, I think that's really about, like, our program of studies and what is the information that's provided to kids during the scheduling process? So, where they look at all the different courses that we offer, but then, based on how kids sign up, certain courses may be limited, right? So, if we only have five kids that sign up for, like, a Rhode Island history, that's something that we're not going to run. So, then we would go back and have to have conversations with those children to where they would land? So, I believe that's what that statement speaks to.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So...
In the past, like, so in the past, if the schedule was not complete upon dismissal in June, and then we finished the schedule and realized we can't run this course, this course, and this course, but each of those had five, seven, eight requests from students, so we have to go and figure out what else they're going to take. The counselors aren't working in the summer, so we don't necessarily get to them until right before school starts, or even when school starts, to say, what would you like to take, instead of whatever class it is that was unable to be able to run for 2021? This way, we're going to bump up the process, as Dr. Jermaine said, so that we can get some feedback before students leave in June, and have them make a second choice based on what is able to run. You know, it starts with a student-driven process, where they make their course selections, which are votes for courses to run. From there, we figure out how many teachers we have, and whether we're able to accommodate that and stay within the contractual, you know, demands, and then we make decisions. This is going to run, this is not going to run this year. What Becky was talking about earlier was the two chemistry, the chemistry and biology AP, which take up 80% of a teacher if the two of them were to run at the same time. Students can take one junior year, one senior year, and it's, it's really challenging to run both of those in the same year. So, that might be one that we plan to advertise, as we'll do one this year and one next year, and alternate from here on in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Next item is the consent agenda. Eight point one, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Next item is eight point two, personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions with the exception of A3, which will be pulled this evening, for lack of a candidate to fill the position? So, a motion to approve eight point two, with the exception of A3, which is pulled.
So moved.
Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight point three is approval of invoices and requisitions. Is there a motion to approve as presented this evening?
So moved.
Ms. Boatright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any questions on eight point three? Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next, next item on the agenda is number nine, nine point one is monthly correspond, monthly correspondence. Is there a motion to accept the correspondence as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright. Motion to, is there any discussion on the motion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Ten, next item is ten reports from superintendent and staff. First one is ten point one, expenditure and revenue reports. And I know everybody's eager to have Mr. Gonzalez come up and give us a report on ten point one.
Good evening, everyone. So, the first discussion will be on our expenditures. I have compiled the data through 1121, which is presented in the 11 buckets of the expenditure list, and it also includes now two actual expense, expenditure numbers from the two previous school years. So, there's 18 complete year, 19 complete year, those are in the gray, and then our current is all in the clear cells. Are there any specific questions?
Mr. Larry.
Thank you, one question, and I'm sure I figured out being answered. It seems like in the technology part of the budget, that we're 40% through the fiscal year, but it's like about 60% of that budget's been used. Is that going to be an issue going forward?
I don't believe so. We had some major purchases with servers and other support that was needed in the IT, so we had to upfront spend a little bit this year, but I don't anticipate that to continue.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
Any more questions?
No. Any other questions? Okay, no, that's good, so if you want to...
Okay, moving on, I've updated a similar spreadsheet for the forecasted revenues. I am currently in process of working with the finance subcommittee, as well as the superintendent, and we are doing a comprehensive review of 10-year spending habits that have, I wouldn't say habits, but spend, spending, spending here in the district, as well as forecasting how we will end our current year. That should be available within the month.
Call it spending trends, how's that?
Trends, yes.
Ms. Bowlen.
On revenues, so, the deadline for Impact Aid is looming, you know, January the 15th.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay, so, how are we doing?
We currently have over 80% of the population returned files. So, we weren't at that point the prior year until mid-January. So, I, I think we're in good shape.
Okay, so, it's good till we're on it, right?
We are.
That's great, because we, I just want to point out that from the last year to the, two years ago to last year, we had a $300,000 increase in Impact Aid. And so, you have to believe that it has something to do with, you know, being really on top of collecting forms, so...
There are a combination of inputs on what those factors are.
Right.
And it does matter on how the Congress feels also with their appropriation act. Or even higher. So, the numbers I stated to you of us being at 80%, Pell Elementary School's actually higher, they're at 91%, and the other two schools are at 82 and 81, respectively. So, we are in great shape. There's a strong team that's very involved in disseminating the information, as well as receiving it.
Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez on either of those?
Just one comment, Mr. Gonzalez, I'd like to thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for the percentage of year-to-date column. This was suggested last year, but never put in. Thank you.
I have just a few updates for the restricted grants. On 12-4, our prior year financial expenditure report was approved and accepted at RIDE. They held off on approving that, because we had to also upload our UCOWA data file for the previous year, and RIDE holds a test to agree that our expenditure report agrees with those UCOWA files. We had some communication going back and forth through November and early December, and that expenditure report is finally approved. All of the CRP grants have been programmatically approved with RIDE, so we are only waiting on the fiscal component to be approved, which I anticipated to happen already, and I've already sent out two emails to RIDE asking when our current year will be approved, so we can request reimbursement for some of the monies going out.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bowlen.
Yeah, as long as we're on collecting money, which has to do with you, I just wanted to also point out that our, as far as lunch forms, free and reduced lunch forms are concerned, I believe Pell's at 100% return rate. We are now, it's incredible.
That's great.
We are up to 72 point something for free and reduced lunch at Pell, and 72 point something at Thompson and Rogers is only, where we're kind of work, we're working on that right now, but we're getting, the goal is 100% from all three schools. So, that would be either you turned in your form, or you waived not turning it in. You, there are, you cannot force anybody to turn it in.
There are only currently, in the district, 27 unreturned, which I think...
Lunch forms, for lunch forms, is this?
Is 19, I believe, at the high school, and seven at the middle school.
That's, that is a miracle.
That's great, that's great.
No, that's very good, that's important data.
The number I stated, the 28, were specifically to children that were free or reduced in the prior year.
Thompson's at 90.
Very good.
Thompson's at 98% currently with receiving applications from there. And Rogers, 75.
That makes me very happy.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gonzalez on the reports as presented? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You brought a lot of good news.
The next reports, 10, 10.3 through 10.7, we can make a motion to accept the remaining reports as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Boatright. Are there any questions, or Mr. Larry?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, it was Mrs. Bowlen's, oh, sorry, maybe, somebody else, mentioned about History Day, would we be discussing that at some point in the agenda? We, I don't remember we, us discussing that.
Yeah, it came up twice. It came up twice. Mr. Vance brought it up when he was first up, and spoke about it, and said that there was going to be a modified History Day in the classrooms, so he did speak to that point. I think he's gone now, but...
Is he still, he's not here no longer?
No.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I thought it was a separate item.
No, he spoke to that earlier than...
We have no item on the agenda for History Day, but we can put, we can have it on for next month for sure, Mr. Larry.
Exactly when is History Day?
I don't know.
It's in January? I don't know the exact date.
So, it's going to be, it's going to be tough to do it, I guess it's kind of not work now. Guess it is what it is, disappointing, very disappointing.
So, there's a motion to accept the reports from the superintendent and staff as presented, seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eleven, section 11 is suggested meeting dates, suggested meeting dates and agenda items. And we have remaining meetings this month is the Newport School Committee. So, December 17th, we have a policy subcommittee meeting room, Rogers Room 305 at 12:30. Wednesday, December 18th, there's a Newport School Committee Newport City Council drunk workshop on a design walkthrough in the city council chambers at 6:00 PM. Thursdays, December 19th, there's a RIDE school walkthrough noon to four, and school building committee meeting at 4:30, and I assume that's in Rogers? There's no location given?
No, they wanted it at Pell.
So, it'll be at Pell?
They wanted it at Pell, yes.
Okay, just there's none given. So, that'll be at Pell. Those are your meeting and agenda items as presented this evening. There is no business for executive session this evening, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bowlen, Ms. Boatright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Good?